... like this. I have the great pleasure of sharing with all of you a staff recognition tonight. And so I'm going to ask Mark Steiner to please come up and join me up front. Mark works with our Food Service Department, and he has recently received an honor from an organization known as No Kid Hungry. I'm going to read a bit of this from the organization. On Monday, May 23rd, No Kid Hungry Texas launched its inaugural celebration honoring five individuals into our Hunger Hero Hall of Fame. Nearly 70 Hunger Hero nominations were submitted by members of their own communities for going above and beyond to ensure kids have access to healthy meals every day. We are excited to announce that Mark Steiner will be inducted into our Hunger Hero Hall of Fame this year. I think that's worth a round of applause. Now, the Hunger Hero Hall of Fame is a chance to showcase the school nutrition professionals and community leaders who make a difference every day. I'm just going to read a little something that Heather Baldwin, our Child Nutrition Director, shared as a part of her nomination of you, Mark. There have been numerous occasions this year in which Mark has volunteered his capability of managing his kitchen with only one of his crew on staff. While putting on their hero capes and preparing meals for a higher volume of students at our junior high, I am nominating Mark for his strength, courage, and perseverance in a very difficult school year. Additionally, as a way to express appreciation, Hunger Hero, No Kid Hungry, is going to provide WISD's Child Nutrition Department with a $2,000 award that can be used to celebrate their employees. So, Mark, we just want to... We want to express our deep gratitude to you for the difference that you make and for the leadership that you show within our Child Nutrition Department. Thank you very much.
That's the great part about it. Thank you.
We're very proud of you.
Can I ask the board to squeeze together and we'll take a quick picture here?
Congratulations. We will now hear the vision and mission statement of WISD.
The Wimberly ISD Vision Statement: Empowering and Inspiring All Students to Achieve Their Full Potential. The Wimberly ISD Mission Statement: Wimberly ISD is dedicated to excellence in education, fosters a culture of kindness and respect, creates lifelong learners, and empowers students to make a positive impact in their community. We believe that everything that we do should help ensure the success of all of our students. As educators, we maximize class time in an engaging and challenging way. Our teachers are personally invested in our students. Students in Wimberly are committed to community service, and the community supports students in return. A quality, public Wimberly ISD education drives the future of a successful Texas. As a district, we strive to meet the needs of the whole child academically, emotionally, and socially. Wimberly ISD provides the foundation to create engaged citizens who will become lifelong learners. All our children, parents, faculty, and staff should be treated with kindness and respect. We are committed to excellence in all we do. The Wimberly ISD Goals: Achieve Excellence in Education, Foster a Culture of Kindness and Respect, Create Lifelong Learners, Make a Positive Community Impact.
And we do have one individual who's signed up for public forum. Alan, do we have that recording as well? Okay, please roll that, sir.
Persons who wish to present public comments must sign in prior to meeting start on the day of the meeting and list his or her name, the name of the group that he or she represents, and the agenda item. Each speaker's submitted comments will be allowed three minutes for presentation to the board, with six minutes granted to a person with a translator. A group of five persons or more shall appoint one speaker who will be allowed three minutes for public comments. The same rules will be observed for public comments on non-agenda items with the following exceptions. One, public comments on non-agenda items will only be scheduled for regular meetings of the board. And two, the total time that will be allowed on non-agenda public comments will be 30 minutes. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others. Except for the speaker's student, no other student's name or identity should be discussed. If you have a concern that you would like heard and resolved, please present your concern through the district's grievance policies. Grievance forms can be obtained at the Central Administration Office or on the district's website. Trustees are not permitted by law to respond or discuss public comments. However, the Board President may direct a speaker to the appropriate administrator for further discussion.
So at this time, we'll have Janelle Whitman, please come forward, and Alan will give you a microphone there so everybody in the house can hear you.
I'm Janelle Whitman. I'm the one that emailed you guys on Friday, and I wanted to talk about school safety. As everybody, I think, is already on the same page that something needs to change, but what it is needs to change is the problem. So I've talked with the Chief Constable, I've spoken with the Director of Safety of Wimberly, and now I've spoken with some of the board members, and it seems that everybody agrees that something needs to be done, but what needs to be done is the problem. My concern as a mom is that we have a month until school starts, and I feel like some drastic things need to happen in order to make me feel more better about my daughter going to school and my son going to school. So some of the positives, because I like to start with positives, is that I did hear from Roz Simmons that there is a new communication system that's going to be implemented. I don't know if it's going to be implemented this year and what that entails, but as a former teacher, oftentimes when we were put in a lockdown situation, we didn't know what the threat was, where it was, how serious it was, where the threat was moving. Oftentimes, teachers would poke their heads through the blinds to see if we could see anything, and specifically in the Uvalde situation, I felt like communication could have been enhanced by text messages, real-time text messages going out to teachers to let them know what the threat was and how it was evolving, like if the threat was moving closer to their classroom, if they were able to leave the classroom to safety. So I don't know what the new communication system that you guys have purchased entails, so I would be interested in learning more about that. And then the other positive I'd like to note is that the board members that I did speak with, they all agree that something else needs to be done. Some of the things that I feel need changing with the current system is, one of the things I was really shocked about was that Wimberly ISD follows the exact same protocol as Uvalde does, which is the "I love you guys" protocol. It's a free protocol that I guess the Chief Constable said hundreds of districts use across the state and the nation. It has completely free access online, so I could look up all the details to the protocol, which is concerning, because if a bad person wanted to see what was going on and how the schools react to situations, they could get all the information on there. But not only that, I feel like there's loopholes that need to be addressed with the program. So I don't know if it's just being utilized because it's free, but I feel like professionals need to reevaluate that.
Why don't you take 30 more seconds and wrap up, okay? That was the three minute, but we're feeling good tonight, so you take 30 seconds and wrap up. Thank you so much.
Okay. So, solutions, because I feel like that's the most important part. The SROs need to be placed at all primary schools. Like, I feel like that's a non-negotiable that needs to happen. I sent you guys links about bulletproof bookshelves that I know they're kind of pricey, but I heard an interview with the CEO. He's willing to work with school districts on getting those placed in classrooms. I feel like that is a defense tool that teachers can use, because as a teacher, teachers feel like they have no way to defend themselves. There'd be times where I'd be in my classroom looking, like if we were in a lockdown drill, like, "Okay, guys, what are we going to use?" And I'd find, we'd find scissors, and I'm like, "Okay, everybody grab a pair of scissors, and if somebody's bag comes in, this is what we're going to use." And I'm like, "That is the most ridiculous situation to be in." So at least bookshelves are a reasonable solution. That's not necessarily like a gun or something. Sheriff Grady Judd is, I used to live in Florida, and he is a very outspoken sheriff who is hard on crime. He has a great program that is called the Guardian Program, and it's arming personnel who aid in prevention of active assailant incidents on school premises. So basically, they train not police officers, but retired police officers or veterans, and they do a minimum of 144 hours of training, and they have to pass psychological and drug screenings, and those guys are placed on the campuses. So they've had success. It's been in act, it's been in, what's the word?
In effect.
Yes, in effect since 2018.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right. Appreciate it, Janelle. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to our SHAC Annual Report. Arnie Moore, I believe, is going to lead that. Student Health Advisory Council.
Hi, good evening. With the Board's permission, I would like to start with an introduction before I get into the annual report. My name is Marnie Moore, and I'm co-chair of this year's School Health Advisory Council along with Dr. Roger Pruitt. As you know, this year, SHAC was created with each school board member selecting one person to serve on the SHAC. I first would like to thank the school board trustees for adopting this process for the SHAC. The result was a group of highly qualified, devoted, hard-working committee members. For a school district our size in an area that I think is technically still considered rural, we are so fortunate for the experience and expertise that the SHAC members brought to the committee. I'd like to take a moment to briefly introduce each SHAC member who was appointed by the Board last August, and if you're here tonight, please give a little wave or stand up. So Roger Pruitt likely needs no introduction. Dr. Pruitt is a highly regarded, board-certified pediatrician here in Wimberly and is a fellow of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Meredith Davenport is a board-certified OB-GYN and is a fellow of the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology. She practices at St. David's Medical Center. Jenny Kenley is a licensed professional counselor here in Wimberly who consults with the district. Jennifer Kirchner holds a degree in education and has served on the SHAC in another district before moving to Wimberly. David Knight is a family practice nurse practitioner here in Wimberly. Nicole Wesley is the Associate Chair of Curriculum and Student Success and Associate Professor of Dance at Texas State University. I hold a JD LLM, MPH, NMABD on my PhD, which is focused on behavioral science and health policy. So each of us is also a parent of a student here at WISD, or at least a recently graduated student. Additionally, there are four members of the SHAC who are WISD employees who were appointed by their principals. Kenneth Gustafson, the high school health teacher. Lori Ferris, Danforth Guidance Counselor. Lori Tommy, seventh grade honors science teacher and seventh grade team leader for the Science Department at Danforth. And Michelle Wilkes, PE teacher at Jacob's Wall Elementary. So as you can see, we have a superbly qualified SHAC. And as I will get into shortly, for this year's SHAC's primary undertaking, I am especially grateful for the medical professionals on our SHAC. Dr. Pruitt, I'm looking at you especially. We are very lucky they are willing to serve and share their knowledge as we navigated creating a health curriculum. To have their input was amazing, and I hope future Wimberly Shacks are as fortunate as we were to have these medical professionals serve. As you may know, Shacks are required to meet a minimum of four times per year. We far exceeded that minimum. We held seven meetings, including two that were open to the public, and we met many, many more times over email as we worked through everything. Invariably, we agreed at our first meeting that, to the greatest extent possible, we would strive to make every decision by consensus, and we succeeded. Every decision we made as a committee was made by consensus, even and especially when we were addressing sensitive topics. The committee members, all appointed by you, the school board, have pretty diverse backgrounds, perspectives, and beliefs. With all of that in the background, our committee was able to, again, by consensus, create a human sexuality curriculum for the Wimberly High School Health Class. I am so very proud of the work that we accomplished together and of the curriculum that we are proposing to you tonight. To my team members, I do not say this lightly, that it has been a true honor and a privilege to serve with you, and I want to thank you, the trustees, for the opportunity. So, on to our report. As I have already mentioned, our major undertaking this year was the creation of a five-day, initially four-day, human sexuality curriculum for Wimberly High School Health Class. I know that each of you has already reviewed the curriculum, but I'd like to give a brief summary for those here and just a recap. So Day One has students create a dream board for themselves. Where do they see themselves in five years, 10 years, further into the future? This lesson is at the start of the health class because so many decisions that students will end up making will impact, sorry, so many decisions that students will end up making will impact their health. Nutrition, physical activity, the use of alcohol or drugs, whether to engage in sexual activity, injury prevention, chronic and communicable disease prevention, interpersonal relationships, and so on. Day Two covers healthy versus unhealthy relationships, human trafficking and online safety. Day Three covers sexually transmitted diseases, birth control, budgeting for parenthood, and refusal strategies. Day Four covers anatomy and reproduction. This is a review of the lessons that are taught in their earlier science classes. And Day Five covers consent and sexting. The lessons on consent and sexting were added following the meetings that we had with the public. In February, we held two meetings open to the public to review the then draft of the human sexuality curriculum. And those meetings were, in one word, fantastic. I was shocked, but they were. The discussion among the attendees was thoughtful and in-depth. There were many questions about the curriculum, and there was a lot of feedback offered from those who attended. The main items that parents requested be added to the curriculum were more information on consent, more emphasis on the fact that condoms, in addition to being a method of birth control, reduce the risk of STDs, and information on illegal ramifications of sexting. So as a committee, we took their feedback and we went back to work. The curriculum that you see before you is what was presented in its entirety, other than the videos from PAPAS, and that was just due to time constraints. The links were shared with everyone who attended. So that curriculum was presented in its entirety to those who attended those public meetings. So with the addition of the lessons of consent and sexting. I'd like to take a moment to give a shout out to Coach Gustafson, who was able to take notes from our ideas and discussions during our meetings and turn them into lesson plans. It was quite a process to behold, and he earned the admiration of all of us on the committee. Our committee was able to tackle other health-related projects as well, which are outlined in the report. Last summer, Michelle Wilkes took on the task of beginning to coordinate health education in Wimberly for K through 12. She and I met with health, PE, and science teachers and campus nurses to review the health TEACs, identify when they were taught, and begin to address vertical integration of the TEACs. At the high school level, Jenny Kenley is leading the planning for a suicide awareness walk this fall. Jacob's Wall Elementary added community walks. There are morning walks when parents are invited to walk the trail with their students. Next year, first responders and other community members will be invited to join the students on these walks. As a committee, we reviewed the videos shown to fourth and fifth graders concerning hygiene and puberty. The existing videos were in need of an update, to say the least. I think they were actually on videotape. So working with the campus nurse, we identified more current and engaging videos to cover these topics. And additionally, a huge plus is the new videos are available online, which makes it much easier for parental access and review. Michelle Wilkes is in the planning stage of creating a prize patrol during lunch at Jacob's Wall Elementary. Students who have at least the recommended number of servings of fruits and vegetables could be recognized by the prize patrol members in fruit and vegetable costumes and earn a small prize. Our hope is to start the same program at Blue Hole Elementary once it's established at Jacob's Wall. Michelle and her team at Jacob's Wall also created a running program that tracks students and staff members' miles, so there's a lot of good health stuff happening at Jacob's Wall. And on that note, I cannot let the opportunity pass by to heap praise on Michelle. If you don't already know, she's a superstar, and I don't think there's any greater advocate for the health of Wimberly's, for the health of Wimberly's schoolchildren. WISD is very lucky to have her. The other items that you see on the report are a continuation from prior years. Next year's SHAC members and the Board will decide on the SHAC priorities for 2022, 2023, but topics that this year's SHAC members have discussed tackling next year include health curriculum at Danforth, further work on the vertical teaming for health education, focusing on WISD employee wellness and burnout prevention, and including more health lessons, including nutrition, during PE classes at Jacob's Wall. So before we wrap up, I wanted to ask if any of the trustees had any questions concerning any of the foregoing, especially the human sexuality curriculum, which is on the consent agenda for later in the evening. Dr. Pruitt has graciously made time and is scheduled to be here tonight to answer any questions which require a medical explanation, and several other SHAC members are here as well to field questions.
Marnie, thank you so much for the excellent report. Really appreciate it, and all who served on SHAC, thank you all. Trustees, do you have any comments or questions at all? All right, we do have the consent agenda, as you mentioned, Marnie, so we'll see if anything comes up there, so.
Okay, one more thing, so.
Yes, ma'am.
In conclusion, thank you for entrusting our committee with the task of creating the human sexuality curriculum, was a daunting project, to say the least, and I think I can speak for our entire committee in saying that we're all extremely proud of the product that we created and of our work together.
Yes. Thank you so much. Can we give that team a big hand this evening? We want to welcome Roz Simmons to the mic, the podium, who is our Safety Director. Roz?
Thank you. Oh, I thought he fixed me all the way up there. Hang on a minute. Okay, good evening. President Campbell, school board members, Dr. Bumwul, thank you for the opportunity to provide an overview of Wimberly ISD's safety features. If I get a little sidetracked, I've got to tell the dog to stay. All right. So as I begin, safety management encompasses four stages. This evening, I'm going to highlight programs that Wimberly ISD has in place under three of the four stages. I have put recovery off to the side, which encompasses short-term and long-term efforts for rebuilding and revitalizing affected communities. I will say this, that recovery begins when the crisis, with the crisis. How we handle the crisis will definitely impact our recovery. As I move through the stages of prevention, preparedness, and response, I would like to highlight some of the entities that we use as our evidence-based practice experts. I would like to say ahead of time that Wimberly ISD partners with our local law enforcement, Hays County Sheriff's Office, Precinct 3, constables, fire, EMS, and forge strong relationships with our community local partners, City of Wimberly, Barnabas Connection, Church Alliance, to name a few, as we plan and have dealt with COVID and other issues. Prevention. Here, I'd like to highlight the Texas School Safety Center, which is in our backyard. Wimberly ISD utilizes Texas School Safety tools, trainings to strengthen our knowledge and safety procedures. Texas School Safety University is a university-level research center at Texas State University. I may say that backwards. They are tasked in Chapter 37 of the Texas Education Code and the Governor's Homeland Security Strategic Plan with key safety initiative and mandates. They serve as a clearinghouse for disseminating of safety and security information through research, training, and tech assistance for K through 12 junior colleges throughout Texas. Wimberly ISD recently concluded a grant-funded research partnership with Texas School Safety for collaboration among school police and community partners for school-based law enforcement. And that was to help create safe school environments. We are excited to partner again with Texas School Safety for a National Institute of Justice study on the value and implementation of behavioral threat assessments in school. Mental health, first aid. All of our staff is trained in mental health first aid. Teachers trained in, teachers are also trained in trauma-informed practices. We don't ask them to be experts, but we do empower them to respond and intervene as necessary and report. Emergency operating plans, a multi-hazard approach. Wimberly ISD has emergency operating plans. They were approved by Texas School Safety in November of 2021. The emergency operating plans are an overview of the emergency management concepts, and they provide an outline of organizational structure and policies. Access control. It's the ability to get into our schools or to come into our schools, and who is supposed to be in our schools and who is not to be in our schools. We have formulated some standard operating procedures for all facilities, which allows Wimberly ISD to create a safe environment. When procedures are aligned, discrepancies are noticed, and corrective actions can be taken. At this present time, the schools are locked. Summer school students are greeted at the door and brought into the building. All our deliveries, it's ongoing that all deliveries come through the front office. They do not come through other facilities on campuses. Staff use their badge access to enter the schools. Signage directs visitors through the front office. Once they're in the front office, we put them through the Raptor system, which is looking for predators, sexual predators, and they receive a badge. And high school, this year, the leadership of the high school tried something new to keep all the doors locked and gave our students access. They had access on certain days during certain times only. The badge also functions as an ID, also functions to get their lunches. The barcode on the bottom functions to get their lunches and check books out in the library or computers out. We have placed monitors in each front office. Those reflect the perimeter cameras so that they are easily viewable, and we have made some enhancements in there recently. And the last, we have canine detection. We do bring the, as the kids say, drug dogs in for detection of over-the-counter drugs and your other drug paraphernalia. And again, these are non-aggressive dogs. We contract that out. TEA has created six pillars of Safe and Supportive Schools Program. This is a holistic approach to the school. The first one is the promotion of a, let me back up. We are complied, we comply with these provisions, and this is in statute, Senate Bill 11. And this is a holistically billed Safe and Supportive School Environments. We will continue to implement and promote TEA's SSSP. Promotion of positive school climate, this may come in the form of surveys with students and teachers. This will give us what they're seeing through their eyes, their perspective. We will formalize the multi-tiered systems of support. Some of you may remember this as RTI. At the lower levels, it's called GIST, but we will begin to formalize that process. And basically, this is tiered support for any students that's struggling in any area. It can be school climate, social and emotional domain, mental and behavioral health to support wellness, learning and safety of students. TEA recognizes, informs of partnership with Texas School Safety, recognizing that conducting behavioral threat assessments is valid, and we will continue with those. Train staff and students on preventing, recognizing, and responding to harmful, threatening, or violent behaviors that pose threat to community, school, or individual. This is our P3 reporting. This is through sometimes counseling. This is the see something, say something. These are all those pieces of reporting where we gain information of what maybe is going on. We will continue to collect data. Some of that's for continuous improvement of the system. The other part may be that our interventions that we've placed with a child, a student, are working. We will continue to collect data. Some of that's for continuous improvement of the system. The other part may be that our interventions that we've placed with a child, a student are working. And again, the number six is support facility security and safety. This can be security procedures, equipment, the wearing of IDs, adding badge readers for access for staff. Preparation. I'm going to talk about the I Love You Guys Foundation here. The I Love You Guys Foundation works hand-in-hand with Texas School Safety. They are part of their program. The foundation is a crisis response and post-crisis reunification, used in more than 30,000 schools, districts, and departments, agencies, organizations, communities around the world. Protocols are created through research-based best practices of school administrators, psychologists, public space safety experts, families, and first responders. And this, I Love You Guys is the standard response protocol that we utilize, and I will talk a little bit about that more than a minute. Preparation, stop the bleed, this is new for this year. And this is part of health and safety training. All staff are trained, and basically, this is how to stop a bleed from a small cut to something that's a lot more. Around the, the district, we have 12 new boxes with AEDs and tourniquets. And actually, there's a whole kit that has gauze and scissors and tourniquets in them. Title IX training. This has been new for us this year. All staff and substitutes are trained in Title IX. That has to do with harassing, bullying, cyberbullying. They are trained in mandatory reporting of Title IX and child abuse. Help Desk, security issues. All staff have access to Help Desk through our Edge of Foria software. This allows them to enter a work order when they see something, something's wrong. They don't have to wait, they don't have to go through the front office. They can put that work order in, maintenance has been wonderful, and addressing those that day. They have a quick response, especially when we talk about doors and exterior doors. Communication devices. Fire alarms are checked routinely, intercoms are checked daily. All campus utilize internal radios. Each facility has an LCR, LCR radio with a WISD-only channel. Drills with radios are completed biannually. Communication, I will get into what was alluded to earlier in another slide here when we talk about some of our software. More preparation was something we learned this year, that we are prone to wildfires. When we have a weather alert or wildfire or heat alert, I usually take that information and push it out to our leadership, which asking them to review, ask the teachers to review their policies and their procedures, and increase your situational awareness to what is going on. Software. We have new transportation software that allows the parents, and there's an app with that, that allows the parents to log in, see where their student is on the bus. It uses a smart tag. That smart tag also can function as an ID and has a barcode on it, and the barcode can be used with our lunches. So one device, one piece of, of equipment multipurpose. We also will put in this year Navigate 360, which has, houses quite a few of our pieces of software that we use. There's emergency management in that. In the communication piece, that when a teacher is in a lockdown, they have the ability to pull up their role and tell us, leadership, who's in that class and who's not in that class, or if somebody's hurt. The other piece of that is that our local Hays County Sheriff's Office, James Young, actually has access to the behind scenes of that Navigate. And if, when they hear of an incident, maybe something violent that's in this area, they can immediately push a button. The teachers have the app on their phone, it would alert the teacher. It will alert me, myself, the leadership, that there is a secure maybe in the area where we're going to lock the outside doors, the threats outside the building. That will even get to them prior to the intercom. So that is a really quick response to, to something that is in the area. And that has been tested, San Marcos had an incident, and it worked quite well with them. We also house P3 in our behavioral, P3 is our anonymous reporting app that has worked pretty well in kiddos and parents and community members, telling us something that they saw that made them uncomfortable, or they were worried about a student, and they can report through that app. That is real-time. There's a, there's an amount of us that receive those, that bit of information. We get an alert through text message or through email. And then we can respond in real-time with the person who has put the report forward and ask them questions. They can upload video, they can upload pictures, they can upload quite a few things. And we can have a conversation back and forth in real-time. It also allows us to resolve it, document what we did, what the future looks like, and in real-time, all of admin can look at that and see what's going on. So we don't have to make a lot of phone calls. And for follow-up, follow-up is also in there. Behavioral threat assessment software is in Navigate with us, and that allows us to take on a student, form the questions, who's on that team. They can all, we all share that information through that app, and what needs, what are the next steps that need to be done, what has been done. We can upload documents, we can upload all types of pieces of evidence to assist us as we make that decision of what's, how to intervene with that student. Raptor is our visitor chat gun. And that is utilized at every campus. And then we have a new piece of software, PeriWeather. We got caught a few times this past year with lightning storms overhead or tornado, and our local KVU, KXAN, our local apps were not working. Excuse me, they were working, but we weren't notified. The PeriWeather allows you to get a, a really good view of what's going on in your area. Not to mention, our coaches will have it on their phone as they travel. If they're coming back and it's rained a lot, they can actually decide which route they're going to take. Sometimes we do tend to take other routes and, but there might be a road out, and that, that information will be relayed to them through the app. Mental health resources. We've partnered with Dell T-Chat, who provide mental health services via telehealth to our students. We have a couple of tablets, and we utilize, utilize that often, that's with parental consent. Wimberly ISD has mental health resources for students at every level. Enhanced security additions. If you'll notice on your way out, there's a blue button up above where the receptionist sits. And every front office, there is a, a blue button, and it is alarmed just in case it is discourages tampering with it. When the blue button is pushed, the doors lock. So when that blue button is pushed, the doors around this building lock. Each campus has one. It used to be that we had three buttons that sat by the receptionist, they were all white. Some of the buttons got pushed by mistake. You had to know where the button was. We saw that as something we needed to fix. And so we pulled the buttons up. And if there is something insecure that needs to be done, or the doors need to be locked, someone's alerted, then they can push the button. We also changed the 911 button to red, and so that there's a distinction between the buttons. The other white button is to allow access in through, through the locked doors. We also have remote buttons that we would be using a scutter. So there'll be a lapel pin that you push, and it'll actually lock the doors. All right, I'm going to talk about standard response protocol, which is I Love You Guys. Here in Hays County, we say one county, one protocol, meaning that everyone here in Hays County operates underneath one protocol. We speak the same language. Hays County Sheriff's Office was an early adopter of the SRP system, and even developed materials and procedures for the reunification protocol. One county, of course, refers to all of Hays County having one protocol, one language. That means our, our law enforcement, first responders, speak the same language to insert, ensure an effective coordinated coordination during an incident. Hays County Office of Emergency Services facilitates an SRP task force, which we have collaborating partners, Hays County Sheriff's Office, San Marcos PD, our SROs, HAYCISD, SMISD, WISD, DSISD, and private schools. Follow the SRP protocols. We share resources for drills, training, ensure completion of after-action reports, assist with technical aspects, maps and routes, identify possible problem areas, close gaps, share observations, and collaborate on current trends. Here are your SRP icons for the drills. Each campus participates in 11 drills and one lockdown exercise annually. Our local and county law enforcement's first responders and the OES, Office of Emergency Services, constables are aware of the drills and participate in our SRP drills. After-action reports are collected after each event. You have a hold, which means to hold in place, something's in the hallway, maybe EMS needs to come, we need everybody to stay in their rooms. You have a secure, which used to be called a lock, a lockout. And this means the threat's outside. That could be that, just as recently, we had something happen behind Jacob's Well, and, or it could be that there's a skunk on the field. We, we live in a rural area, it does happen. The lockdown locks lights out of sight. Schools must have a lockdown drill within the first 30 days of the fall and spring semester, and one lockdown exercise, meaning where we bring in Hays County Sheriff's Office, constables, first responders to help us out as we go room to room. Drills consist, the drills that we have the first 30 days. There is a curriculum for that. There is a video, there's conversation, there are tabletops for the students to go through. Avoid, deny, defend, which is from the FBI and the Alert Center, is instituted in that, that space. If we can't avoid it, sometimes the avoidance is to, to put a door, a barrier between you, if you can't get outside. Okay? And then deny, to put things up against the door. I've walked in and found desk and everything else up against the door. And then defend, I've walked in and seen a teacher with a baseball bat when we were doing our lockdown exercises. To evacuate, we're basically going to say evacuate for this, to this place. It's going to be repeated twice. And then to shelter, shelter for tornado is, is what we tend to shelter for, and they'll tell them what to do to move interior walls. Our drills are spread out through the year, and again, like I said, there are 11 of them. And all our facilities participate in those, excuse me, all our campuses participate in those. Respond, how do we respond to something? Here, I'm going to, I'm going to highlight the Alert, the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training, which again, is in our own backyard. Alert began in 2002 at Texas State University. It's a partnership between Texas State University, Hays County Sheriff's Office, and San Marcos PD to address the need for an active shooter response training for first responders. In 2013, Alert was named the national standard in active shooter response training by the FBI. The mission is to provide the best research based on active shooter response training in the nation. All Hays County Sheriff's Office SROs and Precinct Three constables are trained in single-response active shooter training. We have a little bit more distinction that Don Monahue, our Precinct Three Constable, is well-versed in Alert training. In 2005, he took the position of the Director of the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training Center at Texas State University. So we have some inside information and an expert there. Respond, how do we respond with our emergency operating plans? When we create these plans, we meet with our partners, partners, again, our law enforcement, first responders, community partners to review our EOPs. We will have a meeting this time that'll take place before the beginning of school. Campus safety plans have been aligned. They are speaking the same language and moving in the, in the, the movement is the, the same throughout the district. Communication plans. Communication procedure, we have a thoughtful approach in the way that we keep our board, staff, and parents informed. We have a PIO, who is always in the loop and sends out his information in a appropriate manner. Crisis teams. Each campus has a crisis team. It's a team of admin, team leads. They respond to coordinating and coordinate emergency incidents. Central office leadership serves in any capacity, resource, or, or hands-on-deck to assist a campus with incidents. Behavioral threat, threat assessment teams. Each campus in 2018, Wimberly ISD took a tableful of administrators to the Jewish Center in North Austin to listen to Sigma, to train us, and Sigma trains the, the Secret Service, on behavioral threat assessment. We saw the need, because we have students who, there is no profile, but we have students who have grievances. And so why would we not intervene? Since then, every campus has administrators, if not principal, assistant principal, and counselor, trained in behavioral threat assessment. Ms. Lyles and I serve on each team, and it's a proactive, evidence-based approach to identifying individuals who may pose a threat and providing interventions before a violent incident occurs. Next steps. We're going to need to audit and update our emergency operating plans. We will be attending a reunification training July 25th, 26th in San Marcos. We'll explore, explore hardening, enhancing campuses with our safety committee. I will be adding civilian response active shooter event, CRAZE training, and stop the bleed for staff and substitutes. It'll go along with our SRP. Develop training for our volunteers that come onto our campuses, and awaiting any additional TEA protocols. I know sometimes we think safety is all about the admin, but we empower our staff to act. Safety is a we collective responsibility. I appreciate y'all listening to me, taking the time, and thank you. President Campbell, board, Dr. Boomall, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Roz. Any questions or comments from the trustees at all?
I'd just like to say how proud I am of Roz. When they first assigned her this job, I was like, oh my gosh, this is a gigantic job. But she's taken the bull by the horns and does an incredible job. We work closely together, and I see the dedication she has for this. I feel very confident of where we are, so.
Thank you, Ken.
Roz, can you go back a screen where it talks about CRAZE, I think was the acronym?
Yes.
Civilian Response Active Shooter Event. So tell me, tell me more about what that looks like. Are we talking about? Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
I can.
Because here's, here's where I'm going with it. Eventually, I want to ask you, have we ever seriously considered arming our teachers that might want to do so?
Okay, let me go back to CRAZE.
And then on top of that, would there ever be a volunteer group or element that we, we could layer on top of that with all the necessary training, behavioral background checks, et cetera?
Understand. CRAZE, I'm, I'm trained to teach CRAZE, and it is from the Alert Center. And basically, it is reminding us as adults, for our situational awareness. Example, El Paso. You know, Paso, when the shooter was there, the children heard the gunshot wounds, the gunshots. The parents heard the gunshots, but they were like, what, what is that? And the kids were like, hey, we got to go hide, we got to get out of here. It's to, it's working with the adults. It actually feels empowering to know that I can do something besides stand here. It's the void, deny, defend, and just the situational awareness, and then the percentages of, of your movement, the efficiency of your movement, and being aware of where you are, and then how to react to that.
How to react under stress, right?
Yes.
Okay. So talk, talk to me about what we might have talked about in the past before, you know, in previous years about the possibility of training teachers and arming teachers if they, if they choose to be.
I, I think that's a great question. I don't believe it's one for just me to answer. I believe that's a collective, taken to the, the climate in our community also. And so that's a question that I'll put with Dr. Boomall, and I'd be happy to, to get an answer back to you.
I appreciate it. And then, and I know that sounds drastic, and I hate that, I hate that we have to talk about that kind of stuff. I really do. It speaks to where we are as a society, but let's step outside of the realm of firearms. Let's talk about parent-volunteer patrol groups, if you will. I know that Dripping Springs School District has a program called Dads at the Door. I have some friends from church that are involved with that. They have kids that go to schools there. It's a deterrent, among other things, it helps keep the kiddos in line, you know what I mean? Heaven knows, we can use that in junior high, because junior high kids are junior high kids, right? But have we ever considered anything along those lines? Would, would, would you be open to that conversation as well?
I'm open to.
More than you, but I'm just kind of engaging your interest.
It, it's not, I know it's just me standing here, but I always feel like there's like, you know, 20 people standing behind me. What I normally do is I go and get the information and have them share it with me, and I have contacts at Dripping Springs, and share that information, and then again, sit down with Dr. Boomall. And then, again, sit down with Dr. Bonwall and, you know, see where we are with that. Like I said, I talked about volunteer training. We, in the past, have just had volunteers, and we were happy to have volunteers. And now it's, it's time that we have put the training in there because my thought was if something happened, they don't know what to do.
Yeah.
And so there's, it encompasses a multitude of things. Also of helping us see something, say something. It's another set of eyes for us.
I think it always introduces the risk of more liability, the more cooks that are in the kitchen in that, in that use, you know, in that scenario. So we really have to be careful there. So I would love to talk with you and the 20 people behind you and Dr. Bonwall about moving, making some serious strides on this front. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, if I may. Great questions. Roz, I want to thank you for a very comprehensive report. You know, coming into a new position in a new school district and the climate that we're in right now, I think Roz and I were having safety conversations on day one. Those have continued throughout. I will tell you that having the great opportunity to return back to the district, I've been proud of this district in the past because we've been at the forefront of collaboration with other entities. One of the things that I hope that you heard come through loud and clear from Roz is, one, the totality of all the things that are in place and how those are research-based. And they're based on what we're hearing from those who are trained at the highest levels at the state and federal level. There's nothing willy-nilly going on in our school district. We are very thoughtful about the approach to keeping kids safe. It's our first responsibility and our most important responsibility. I know this was a very in-depth presentation. We felt like it was important that our board and our community know what all is in place right now. There's a tremendous amount of training that goes on year in and year out. In fact, if we're being completely transparent, it's challenging sometimes because you have many other things that teachers need to be trained on as well. And the continual increase in our need, and rightfully so, to train staff creates challenges in training them on that thing that really gets them up in the morning and inspires them to come to school, which is to teach kids. I would want you to know that this is a continued conversation that's going on at the state level. In fact, tomorrow, Wednesday, and Thursday, there are three separate special committee groups at the legislature who are meeting on these topics of school safety, on the topics of mental health, wellness. And so we're going to continue to have information coming down the pike from the state to us on this. I was at a Region 13 RAC meeting this past week, which is just a superintendence group from the region center. This was the primary conversation. We had people from Alert, the group that trains all first responders to come in and address the threat. We had people from the Texas School Safety Center. It was shared with us that the legislature is considering some additional funds to help support schools and address, because this costs money, right? But the likelihood of that funding wouldn't be realized until the following school year because of when the legislature meets, is what we're being told right now. But there is some hope that there may be some help in terms of resources to enact additional things to keep our kids safe and our staff safe.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in comments, questions? Yeah. Roz, can I just make a few comments real quick, if I may? I, I know that we are challenged in this district with access control because of some of the designs of our campus. You touched on that. And as we unfold the layers of this onion, maybe we could give some more specifics to the board and also to our community. Obviously, there's some concern about the buzz in the community that says, well, we use the same protocol, the safety protocol, you know, as Uvalde, and you mentioned that 30,000 school districts use that protocol. Roz, if, if I was sitting across the cafe table from you right now and I just said that to you, what kind of feedback would you give me as a concerned citizen with that safety protocol?
Protocols have to be followed. And when they're followed, because they're evidence-based and researched, then our outcomes are better. And when we look at the standard response protocol and the research behind it, and it doesn't remove avoid, deny, defend. So if, if you're in a cafeteria and there's a door, you go out the door. You, you avoid the threat that's in the building. So other places have built other pieces, or they've put two pieces together. There's parts of the protocol with our lockdown in that the door is to be unlocked by a law enforcement officer with a key. Fire tells me, and apparently they always have a key. It's called a shotgun. But they, there's a process also in removing the students from the classroom if they were not able to avoid by leaving the building. There's a process of that because you don't know who the perpetrator is. So there's other pieces built into that protocol versus feeling helpless.
And I know there's a course of 20 people behind you. I'm sure you've thought about expanding the SROs in our district and making recommendations to Dr. Bonwall and investigating the possibility of that.
Again, I think that's, before I took, I think, metal detectors and marshal program to the safety committee, and we looked at the pros and the cons of that. And then how do you not know who's the marshal and who's the perpetrator? Because let's remember, this is under stress that, as a trauma nurse, I haven't had that stress. And so I think that's another great question to sit down with Dr. Bonwall and then take before that committee and, and look at all the pieces, making sure that we're, that we're looking through every single window for the perspective that is what's going to benefit our students with a positive outcome.
Yeah, and I, I know that when a parent or guardian comes in to check out their kid for whatever, identification is needed by that parent and guardian, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Do you feel like we're good on that system and firm on that system, even excellent? Do you feel like sometimes the person that checks that individual, you know, knows him or her and so, no need to show me your ID, this kind of idea? You know, either it's got to be a standard and a guideline or not.
Correct. I believe as Wimberly grows, then that we do need to, we need to grow with that and follow our protocols. We do, there's parts of Wimberly that's still small. And there's going to be just the line, draw the line and say, this is the standard. I believe that our, our community and our parents are ready to move that away. It may be an inconvenience, but they understand now the importance of following those procedures. And when we follow those procedures, you know, all the boxes are checked and we have the appropriate kiddo going home with the appropriate parent. So we're, we're going to, we're always going to get better.
You bet. Thank you for your patience with me, Roz. Appreciate you answering those questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a couple. Along those same lines, do you, do you feel like there are things that we could do from a technology perspective to kind of help increase compliance to the protocols? So, you know, that those that maybe are a little lax on some things might have some accountability there. For instance, on the IDs, using Rob's example, is there a way that we could put something in place where the actual ID has to be scanned in, in order to, for the person to enter the building into some sort of database so that we know that that person is who they say they are?
So at our secondary level, we would, we would like to see IDs on those students. And the, there's an, okay, here's your technology. There's an RFID in those badges. So when that badge is scanned, I can look in a system, and so can Mr. Pate, who is awesome. And I know who went through what door.
I'm specifically talking about like a driver's license or something when a, when a parent comes to pick up a kid and check them out of school, scanning that, their form of identification.
Right, no, the Raptor system does scan it.
Okay.
It's, it's a little slow at times when you have 50 parents coming in. But we have some systems built in, and the principals use some of those different systems to have those scanned ahead of times or to have that information. You can put information in manually to print those badges. We are going to change, tweak a little bit of procedure there that we're going to hang on to your ID until you come back out. Because it also lets us know how many people are in the, in the building in case something does happen. We know who's in that building and who's, who's been there and who didn't check out. We need more scanners.
Okay. Okay.
So, yes. And, but I do believe that we can, and our students should be able to, our pals should be able to use their barcode and scan in.
Okay. And then just one more question, and it was just something that was brought to my attention, the email from a parent after the Uvalde incident that at one of the campuses, and I don't remember if it was Jacob's Well or Blue Hole, but I think it was the day after, and I was told this, have no idea if it's true or not, that there was a back door that was propped open with a rock. And so I'm just wondering what protocols we have in place to kind of catch those things and make sure that those don't happen.
It's going to take all of us. We are all responsible for school safety. It can't be.
So we don't have an alarm on a door, anything like that, if it's propped open for a certain amount of time?
If the, if the door has a badge reader on it, it, it will, there is an alarm that, that will go off in, off the software. But I believe that Uvalde has taught us quite a bit.
Yeah.
And the understanding of doors and the security of those doors and function as a barrier need to stay shut and locked. We are going to put some, some card readers on some different doors so that, that, that doesn't happen. So we have some protocols that, procedures that, again, I speak with Dr. Bonwall to put in place.
And you think those will be in place by, by the time we open in a month?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Roz. Appreciate it. I do know that district officials will be meeting with law enforcement agents, officers and agencies here in a few days to expand this conversation. Three of the trustees will be at that meeting as well. So again, thank you, Roz. And we'll move on to our Wimberly ISD handbook update for 2223. I guess Mrs. Howard, are you doing that one, ma'am? All right.
This handbook was distributed to you for information, and I've had some good catches by a couple of you guys. Thank you so much, and thank you for good insight, Andrea, as to a few little things that we could add on some of the sections. Ken, thank you for the notice on the behavioral coordinator. Does anyone else have any questions regarding the handbook? Of course, you know that the handbook is not a document that has to be board-approved. The code of conduct is. The handbook is good for you to be aware of so that in the event any parent or community member were to approach you with a question, you would have information. Are there any other questions? If you do have questions, know that this is a living document. You can email me. I am expecting a couple of emails for a few more updates. So if you would like to do that, you just feel free to do so.
Dee, do we keep a running record or running list of changes that are made from school year to school year? For example, if there are changes that are made in the handbook this year, I won't know what they are because I didn't see the handbook last year, and I'm probably not going to keep track because it's 80 something pages, right? Do we keep a, a running tally of changes?
I'm pretty certain that we could, at least for the last five years, look at those because each year I provide you a page or two document that states what the changes were for this particular year from last year's book. And so I'm pretty sure that I could find the.
Did you send that out and I missed it?
Yes, sir. It was in an email.
Okay, apologies.
Perhaps from Dr. Bonwall. Yeah, it was a summary of changes for both. One was for the handbook and one was for the code of conduct.
Okay, thank you.
And just an extra note on that, there were very minor changes or very few changes. What you can expect next year is that you will see many more, and it's because the legislative session meets every other year. And coming out of there, there are typically new legal policies that we have to be responsive to within the handbook. So you typically have a heavy year and then a very light year.
Correct. This was an extremely light year.
Thanks for the warning, Dr. Bonwall.
All right.
Thank you, Dee.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. You might be an overachiever reaching back five years. You might want to think about two or three years, yeah. And so now we'll move on to our discussion on policy ELA local campus and program charters, partnership charters, and update on House Bill 1882. And Dr. Bonwall will lead our discussion.
So I feel like this is a great opportunity for me to first just share sort of a mindset thing with you guys. There's this concept of being closed to knowing, and then there's this concept of being open and learning. And I think that every one of us, myself included, we come into situations and new ideas, especially when you're innovating potentially, and there's a part of you that's closed to knowing, right? You have some level of experience, but that's what, what you know. And we all bring value in that. And then there's this other side of us that if we're going to truly be effective as an organization, we have to all commit to being open and learning. And so that has been an opportunity for me over the last couple of weeks to really try to wrap my arms around what is a, a large undertaking that we're considering as a school district. And I know we're in the early stages of that, but I want to share some information with you that, I appreciate the work of Mrs. Howard. She's really been diligent in helping me to gather information that we can and understand. There are a lot of structures and protocols that often go with work like this, innovative work like this. And so as we look at it, we really want to have a firm understanding of, of what does that mean? And what is the guidance that we are receiving or have received from the entities that we report to, in this case, TEA? So I'm going to, I'm going to pass around, it's about a four-page document, and this will be just sharing, when I say our, I'm going to say Dee and my because we've been the primary two people looking at this. This will be, did I give you my highlighted copy? I had that back. This will be our most current understanding. So what you're, what you're looking at here, and this, this information, this was the most concise place where I could find it, just trying to understand, okay, what is the process? If a school district is interested in entering into a partnership with an external entity, what is, what is that process? What are the protocols? What are all the boxes that a government agency requires you to check? And you can find some of this information in other documents that TEA has released. But this one was the most concise, just as a starter. So the conversation that I've had the opportunity to hear the board have up to this point has been around, do we consider a potential partnership? And also, what would the timeframe look like? Is, is it something that would be viable to consider for the coming school year if, if we felt as a district that it was advantageous for us to pursue it? And so this document was a, to the administrator addressed, what we call in the admin world a TAA that comes out from TEA. And they typically are giving us guidance on how to do things the correct way. And so what this one talks about are timelines. This was an April 8th, 2021 document, the subject being Senate Bill 1882, Texas Partnership Applications. And, you know, at, on April 8th, our, our staff didn't know we were looking at this. So this would not have been an email that the staff would have paid close attention to because at that point, the conversation about the potential partnership hadn't come to be. So just through Ms. Howard's diligence that she helped me to find this. But the correspondence outlines required actions and application due dates for Texas partnerships in accordance with Senate Bill 1882, and the benefits that would be required to be in place if you were going to begin in either 2022, 2023, which is this coming school year, or if you wanted to be considered for a partnership in the. or if you wanted to be considered for a partnership in the following year, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. And so that first bolded bullet notes that application for benefits, and by benefits, my understanding right now, by benefits, that's that additional funding that has been discussed. So if you want to apply for benefits that would be associated with a partnership that was going to start in this coming school year, you would have been required to complete this, the, the total application, the totality of it by March thirty-first of this past year, of the current year. You know, a few months back, three months back or so. And then it goes on in the second bullet to note that application for benefits that begin the following school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, are due December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. So at the end of what will be our fall semester here in about five, six months. And then below that, it describes the, the required action. So I'm really going down to those next bullet points. It describes the required actions for benefits eligibility. And it reads to be eligible to receive Texas partnership benefits, districts must, first bullet point, submit a non-binding letter of intent. So basically saying, we're a school district, we're interested in a partnership, we're just letting you know that we want to pursue this. We're, we're tech, checking it out. The second bullet says you must, as a district, attend mandatory training webinars. Now, the third bullet, I believe, if I understand correctly, is one that we would have already accomplished as a district in that it requires that the board adopt and implement the TEA Model Charter Authorizing Policy. I believe that's ELA Local, which the board adopted here recently. The fourth bullet is adopt and implement the TEA Model Campus Charter Application or a similar application and scoring rubric approved by TEA. And, and so they put out a model of that. And I think some of the board or maybe all the board has seen those model documents. Uh, but those would be required to be adopted by the board. And then lastly, all of that would need to be submitted in an application for benefits by March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. So about three and a half months ago, three months ago. If we work further down to where it says mandatory letter of intent for benefits, in order for benefits to begin in this coming school year, it states that the district would have been required to submit a non-binding letter of intent by Friday, October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, about eight months ago. It says clearly at the bottom of that, TEA will not accept a Texas partnerships benefits application package from a district unless the district has completed a letter of intent by the required deadline. And then on the next page, it goes on to describe uh, the required trainings that the district would have to undergo, the leadership, as well as any proposed partner that we might partner with. They have some required trainings. And in the boxes on that second page, it lists out the dates when those trainings happen. And so for the district training, for example, those were offered a year ago in June of twenty-twenty-one, and then again in October of twenty-twenty-one. And those were, at least according to this document, required trainings the district would have had to have gone through to be considered for the coming year to have a partnership. And then there's some additional dates. Uh, and there's, then there's performance contract training. And so I, I, I think the board's aware that if the board were to select a partner, selecting them doesn't finalize things, then you have to actually enter into a proposed contract, right? To determine how this would benefit that organization, your organization, how revenues would be shared, who would be responsible for what. And so there's training associated with that that was done back in August and then in February. So a number of months back, if you were wanting to start for this coming year. And then the last half is really a repeat of that same information, but for districts who would want to consider a partnership with those uh, monetary benefits for the following school year, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. And you can see there that the, the district trainings, the window is in June, and that, that window has already passed. It was actually June third and June tenth. Or there's another one coming up in a couple of months in September. So when I started looking at this information and, and knowing the board was interested in, in what, what would be the potential timeline if the district and the board wanted to move forward with, with a partnership plan, uh, this was the first thing that jumped out at me was, you know, are we able to meet those requirements in order to experience the, what I understand to be the benefit in terms of potential increased benefits of funding? We did set up a meeting, uh, Dee and I set up a meeting with uh, two members of TEA. Make sure I get their names correct. Marion Shute, who is the Director of the Division of Charter School Authorizing at Administration, and Lindsay Denman, who is the TEA Texas Partnerships Manager in the Division of System Support and Innovation. Uh, we actually had that meeting scheduled to occur this morning at ten AM. And about eight AM, I got an email from uh, Mrs. Shute letting me know that we were not going to be able to keep the meeting, they were not going to be able to keep the meeting today. Uh, and so we are attempting to reschedule it for tomorrow afternoon, but I'm, I'm waiting to hear back on whether that's going to work for their schedule. So my desire would certainly be to walk through this information, make sure that our understanding of TEA's requirements is an accurate understanding. The other thing that I want to make sure to ask them about is, as I read through the TEA scoring rubric, what they use to score whether or not a partnership will potentially be approved by the agency? In section E, it, it discusses that the, one of the requirements, as I understand it, is that the district has demonstrated commitment and capacity to oversee the district charter campuses. And under item number nine, it notes that the district, they're looking for the fact that the district has dedicated capacity and resources to charter authorizing processes and ongoing monitoring of district charter campuses, including a dedicated full-time employee that began in the position prior to the evaluation of the partnership. And so I definitely want more clarification on that because I know one of the um, values that I understood the district was looking at this was in order to bring in more revenues and resources to support our district. Um, and, and so I'm, I'm curious about this requirement to add a staff member in order to operate the partnership. If, again, if I'm understanding it correctly. And then under section F of that same scoring rubric, it notes that the district's description of the application and review process needs to demonstrate a rigorous and transparent evaluation of applications. And then under item eleven, it says the description provided by the district needs to match the processes described in the board policy and include opportunities for a community engagement. And so I'm, I'm interested in what they mean when they say provide opportunities for community engagement. You know, we're talking about an innovative idea here that would serve students that do not reside near us. And so it's easy for me to wrap my head around what that means if we are taking a struggling school in our own district and looking to innovate with it and partner with an outside organization. I can see where, where they um, would understandably involve community engagement. In fact, I've been involved with that in a prior district. So I, I have a model for what that looks like. I'm uncertain about, in this language, whether in this type of conversation that's been had by the board up to this point and this idea of a partnership that would serve external students, whether community engagement means talking to our community about this program or whether it means an expectation that we engage communities of the students in which we would technically be enrolling and serving. So that's another area of just a lack of clarity for me right now that, that I'll be seeking clarity on. That's the extent of the additional information that I've been able to gather. Thank you again, Mrs. Howard, over the last two weeks. Be happy to take any questions or, or guidance from the board or feedback.
Well, I certainly understand um, innovation brings hesitancy and, and, and fear of unknown. But I, I want to just make sure that we're not looking at this from, from just a financial perspective, right? Any kiddos that we are able to bring into the district via the charter schools will mean added um, state funding for us, which we sorely need because our properties aren't getting any cheaper and attendance seems to remain stagnant, right? So we're going to have to do something to bridge that gap. But in, in addition to that, I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that we're also not overlooking the fact that we can help out kids who might not have a, have a chance to do so otherwise. And I just want to make sure we're not beating the financial drum only and looking this from, looking at this from, from both angles, right? Um, and I hope that we can continue pursuing this. I think it's a great idea. I do understand, looks like uh, in layman's terms, we kind of missed the boat there with, with, with some of the requirements. But that comes along with innovation too. So I, I, I hope that we keep pursuing this. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Yeah, I would second that. I mean, I think we obviously missed the boat for this next school year and so appreciate the additional information on the deadlines and stuff. And certainly I'm interested to hear how your conversation goes with those folks from TEA around clarification around the other areas. Um, but I too would encourage us, now that we have dates for the next school year, to continue to, to gather information and try and meet some of these other deadlines uh, as we gather more information to see if this is something that would be viable for the following school year.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I would ask you, sir, and Dee, as you have that conversation with TEA, to verify those dates. I know that you'll do that. And don't laugh at me out loud, but uh, is there any? Lexie, don't laugh at me out loud. I wonder about a waiver, you know, if that's even a part of the, you know, possibility if we went down that, that route. And I'm, I'd love for you to ask about that too, if you wouldn't mind. So I do appreciate your comprehensive overview on that. And Dee's work on that as well. Anybody else, conversation or questions at all before we move on? All right, very good. I think we are moving on to our CFO's report. Voices, please, sir.
Good evening. Um, I'll be presenting the May uh, financials. And uh, we are looking at, um, I'll be brief on this one. So we are looking at cash and investment balances of twenty-nine point one. That's at the end of the month. And uh, general fund making up sixty-two percent of that, uh, equivalent to eighteen point one million. Uh, debt service, thirty-two percent, equivalent to nine point two million. As of the end of the month, we have a sixteen million operating uh, fund balance. Uh, that's equal to about six months of operations. Now, after saying that, I would like to take you to the um, report on the, on page three. I think this is a pretty good report that you all need to be um, kind of understanding on this one. It's your uh, income statement, revenues and expenditures report for the general fund. It's critical that we understand that because our fund balance currently is, although it's sixteen um, million, uh, we have already picked our revenue's highest earning seasons or months. So from this point forward, we're just going to be going down mode here until uh, the end of the fiscal year, whereas our expenditures are going to be going up, okay? So um, we currently have an audited uh, fund balance of eight point nine million. Um, our current fund balance is sixteen million. If you divide those by nine months, our operations per month are two point three million. So uh, consider those in twelve months, I'm looking at about um, thirty-two point, twenty-eight point three million in twelve months. That's not considering your recapture payment. If you add your recapture payment on top of that, uh, your total or your estimated would be about thirty-two point five expenditures, while revenues are only twenty-time, twenty-nine million. So putting us in a, in a, in the red um, by the end of the, by the end of the fiscal year. So do be aware of that, that you have already um, approved at least close to a million of uh, projects going into fund balance um, from the beginning of the year. So we are looking at it close to uh, at least um, being in the negative, about two million by the end of the fiscal year. Okay, so this is a critical report that you all need to look at. Uh, so um, I wanted to emphasize that. The general fund has collected ninety-seven point six mil, uh, percent, equivalent to twenty-eight point three million. We've spent sixty-seven percent of the expenditure budget, equivalent to twenty-one point two million. Uh, total meals, we are showing an improvement in meals for the last month. So we have a pretty healthy fund balance in the nutrition program of close to six hundred thousand. Uh, debt service payments, we still haven't made any principal payments until August. Um, the capital projects, we, we've spent uh, close to a million and uh, we should be uh, depleting those funds in the next couple of months. The next item here, uh, current tax collections. Uh, collections for the month, uh, we um, collected close to a half a million. So uh, year to date, we are at ninety-seven point five percent of the total levy. Compared to the previous month, ninety-seven point two eight, so just a decrease of point twenty-three uh, percent. Uh, we have uh, realized ninety-seven point five percent of the um, adopted revenue budget. That's the, any questions on this report right here? That's your um, operating financials for the month of May. Okay, so now uh, let's turn our um, focus to the investments reports. This is the best investments reports I've seen since the beginning of the pandemic. So um, we here, we are reporting the third quarter of the fiscal year. Um, at this time, uh, we, any questions on that? Okay, so that's it.
All right, thank you very much, sir. I'm going to hop in front of you, Greg, and switch uh, orders if I may. Uh, I've already welcomed Greg, and we certainly do to his first official regular board meeting this evening. Many more to come. And um, I know you have uh, a report for us regarding your long tenure here at WISD thus far, and we're anxious to hear that. I do want to remind our trustees and the folks gathered and then listening on the recording that our next board meeting has been shifted from the eighteenth of July to the eleventh of July. So with that said, uh, we're ready for the superintendent's report.
And I'll be brief. Um, this has been a fantastic, just amazing first couple of weeks for me and the district. And it's because of the, a lot of the people that you see facing you right now and because of the people here on the board, uh, it's, it's been a great opportunity for me. You know, I shared an entry plan with you guys before we came in and, and certainly a large part of that is just getting connected with the community, asking lots of questions, understanding perspectives. And these first two weeks, I dove in with our staff and, and with our board. I appreciate the time that all these folks have given to me collectively and individually. Uh, I was just running some quick numbers. I looked at my calendar for the first eight days, the first two weeks, because we're off on Friday right now with the summertime. Thirty-four meetings. Four staff group meetings. I got to meet with our principals and some of our instructional leadership. Got to meet with all our departmental directors. Got to meet with uh, all of our staff here at the central office and then got to meet with our assistant principals. So great, just first kind of talking about culture and getting to know a little bit about each other. Uh, since then, I've had twenty individual staff meetings. I've had five board meeting, board member individual meetings, uh, three community members up to this point. I got to go to my first Region thirteen meeting. Told you about that, lots to do with school safety. One of the things that was mentioned at the Region thirteen superintendents meeting that I'd want to share with you is that there's uh, questions about whether or not we may get consideration uh, school districts across the board with some hold harmless funding for the fifth and the sixth, six weeks. You know, our uh, average attendance, I believe, is in the ninety-three percent range, which historically it's, you know, probably in the ninety-six to ninety-seven percent range. Uh, and that funding was appropriated for schools before the year started. That funding is, is sitting there. They held us hu- harmless for the fourth, four, six weeks, right? We, we knew that, that's already been a benefit to our budget. The question that we're awaiting some guidance is whether or not we'll get that same consideration for those last two, six weeks of the school year. Certainly that would be a monetary benefit to all public school districts and, and this. Certainly, that would be a monetary benefit to all public school districts and especially to us. And I just will repeat one more time, that funding exists. It was already appropriated for public education. It's, it's there to be given to public education if, if the state sees fit. So I'll, we'll be crossing our fingers that that approach will be taken. That would certainly help with some of the budgetary challenges that Moise just shared with you. And I'll be keeping you abreast of that as we get updates. That's the totality of my report, sir.
Great. Thank you, sir. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Astute observers will notice that we pushed back consent agenda later in our agenda on the request of Dr. Bonwall, because there may be some things that are answered along the way during our meetings, and so that's why we've tucked it at this point here and into the future. And so with that said, any discussion or questions about the consent agenda, fellow trustees?
Yeah, I have some discussion on the Shack, the Shack policy that we're looking to approve. And I've reached out individually to everyone via email as well as spoken.
If I can interrupt, do you want to just pull that right now, and then we'll come back?
Yeah, we can, we can pull that, yep.
So you're making a, go ahead, a motion?
I move to pull the Shack curriculum recommendation.
Okay. A second. Okay, we have a second.
Are we, is this to accept the consent agenda minus those?
Yeah. If there's not anything, others things that we need to pull.
Okay, because I feel like there's probably one more thing we need to pull.
Yeah.
So I think we need to.
Let's do this.
Make a motion to accept consent agenda minus at least two items, so is that, is that all right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So we have the, pulling the.
Motion to pull the Shack curriculum and approve minus the Shack curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
The consent agenda, I move to do that.
Okay.
I'd also like to hold Item 4C.
Item 4C, minutes of.
The handbook.
Oh, I see, okay. All right. Okay. All right.
The Code of Conduct?
Yeah, thank you, Andrea.
9G?
The one that we do approve.
What, what number is that?
It's 9G.
Right here, it's 9G. Yeah, yep. Okay, so those are pulled. Do I have a motion on those two items?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus 9F and minus 9G.
There's a second, a motion, a second. Any discussion, questions?
We might want to pull that minutes out, so that you don't vote on those.
We could do that next again? You want to do it now?
Well, if you accept the whole consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
You might want to go ahead and take that out also.
Good idea. Okay.
I don't remember which meeting it was. It was a special call meeting.
Yeah, you'll, we'll need to pull that one, too, because we didn't have a full.
Correct.
Board present on May 27th.
Yes.
Yeah, so that would be Lexi.
Yeah.
All right, so we have those three items to pull, so we need to amend the motion.
I move to amend the motion to approve the consent agenda minus 9F, 9G, and the meeting minutes from May 27th.
Second. We have a second? All right, all in favor? All right, so across the board. Thank you very much. Let's start with 9F, the Shack curriculum recommendations.
Okay. So again, I've, I've reached out individually to everybody, so this, this change in, in some language around the emergency contraceptive section, I think it's on Slide 27 of the curriculum. I've sent the requested language, and I'm happy to read it out loud here, that we remove the sentence, "Emergency contraceptive pills are not effective if a woman is already pregnant", and replace it with, "If fertilization has occurred, emergency contraception pills may prevent a fertilized egg from attaching to the womb or implantation." That's what I'd like to have added instead.
Any comments or questions?
I guess it doesn't really make any difference. I felt like it was Page 28, but maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, yeah, you could be right.
Yeah, okay.
It's whatever slide had the, the language about emergency contraceptive.
I just wanted to make sure we got the right page number in there, and it's written in here somewhere, but I'm not that fast of a reader, so.
It was not written in my email from today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion on a change?
So, yeah, I move to modify the language.
Sorry.
Yeah, that I just spoke.
Hey, I'm with you. Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion or questions?
I do have a question on that. Dr. Bonwall, do you believe that this is something that we need to vet with our Shack committee prior to adopting it? Do you, do you believe that this is a change that should be brought through the group, or is this, in your opinion, appropriate for the board to act on?
It was something that was vetted via email today through Marnie and Dr. Pruitt. Wasn't necessarily 100% agreement on it, but in the end, the recommendation was to bring it to the board.
I was actually asking Dr. Bonwall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good question for the board to consider in terms of process. So as a board, you, you are required to have a Shack committee. And you, if I understand correctly, designate each one of you individually someone to, to represent on that Shack committee. And so I think the, the question for the group to ponder is the process you want to follow. Certainly, you have the authority as the board to make that decision. The question I, I would ask for you to consider is, when you go through the process of creating a committee and you're selecting people for that committee that you feel are diversely representative of the community on a challenging topic, whether or not you feel comfortable as a board making that decision without involving their conversation from that point. And that truly is, it's your elected officials that, that's in your purview to make that decision? That would be the, the question I would ask you to think about in the process.
Thank you. And Andrea, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was, I didn't want to miss another.
I missed that, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I'd have a question. If we approve this tonight without the language change in it, is it chisel and stone? Can we then send that back to Shack and say, can you please look this over and make a recommendation on that? Or how would we do that?
Very few things are ever set in stone. You, you could certainly have the opportunity for the Shack committee to continue to consider and provide feedback to you, should you wish to do so.
Otherwise, we need to vote on the motion and the second that's been made. All right, so all in favor, lifting of the hand, please. Okay, so all opposed? All right, we have 3-3. So motion fails, and we shall carry on with.
With that failure, I would like to say that I like what they say, but I'd like to go send that back to the committee, allow the committee to look that over, and then bring us, because I don't really know enough about it right now. We learned this this afternoon. This is something that we've not really had a chance to discuss, and I don't know where the committee's thought process was on that. I'd like to research that a little more, although I'm in agreement with what they want to do. I just want to make sure that we don't undermine our committees and move forward without their recommendation on that, so.
Great, well said, Ken.
If I may add, where I sit, I, I also don't have a problem with the revised language. It's more the process that I want to trust and would like a further update on that.
Yes, so I would love to hear from the Shack committee again on that process.
Great.
Okay. Hmm?
Wait on that or do I know? No, wait on it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that later.
Do we need a motion to table it?
No.
No?
No, it's already failed as far as that, so.
Okay. All right, we will move on to the Code of Conduct, and that, turn, I'll turn, turn that over to Nate.
Yeah, thank you. As far as the Code of Conduct goes, I feel like I, I need a little bit of additional time to go ahead and read through that, knowing that we have five years to go back and, and look at changes. I'm looking forward to doing that. I don't suspect that I'm going to have a, an issue with anything in there, as we all probably wouldn't, but I just wanted a little extra time to, to review that. So table until, table until the next board meeting on the 18th, I think you said? 11th, yeah.
Okay, so you'll need to make that a form of a motion.
Yeah, so I would like to, I, I make a motion to table item consent, agenda item 9G, the Code of Conduct draft until next board meeting.
There's a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
There's a second. All in favor? You have something, Joe?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Thank you. Another question for Dr. Bonwall on this. Not approving this Code of Conduct tonight, does that cause any kind of imposition to the administrative team? Does it cause any issues from a timing standpoint, deadlines, et cetera?
Dee, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My, my understanding is that our administrative team got together and worked on this a little ahead of schedule this year to, to bring it forward to you guys. So knowing that our next meeting is about three weeks away, that, that shouldn't be an issue.
No, but one thing is, we do have people that are already registered, and so we just need the people that are signing off that they read the Code of Conduct, if people understand and abide by it, we need to ensure that they actually look at the new ones that comes out, whenever that comes out.
If, if there are any changes made to it, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, lifting your hand, please. All right, and opposed, all right. So the motion carries, Dottie. All right, now we are going to approve the consent agenda. So do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda? We already approved it?
Yes.
Oh, man, you guys are ahead of me. This is great, thank you. All right. Okay, any other, we're going to close session at this time, correct?
Do you want to do the?
By 27 minutes.
Okay. Yes, the minutes to, we need to approve the minutes of May 27th because we had a trustee out, so do I have a motion for that?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Ken. There's a second. All in favor? All right. Across the board, Dottie.
One abstention.
One abstention, thank you. I just assumed that, okay. All right, so we're going to head into a closed session. We'll play this, and then we'll adjourn for that closed session.
The board may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. The board may then re-enter into open session for further discussion and necessary action. Deliberation in closed session may include: security devices or security audits, Texas Government Code 551.076 and 551.089; personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074; new hires, terminations, employee discipline; deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code 551.072; or consultation with attorney, Texas Government Code 551.071.
All right, we'll go to closed session, 7:48 PM is the time. We're returning from closed session. The time is 8:34 PM. Do we have any action?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we offer positions to April Dupree, Holly Armada, Tiffany Merrick, Eric Nichols, Katie Zimmerman, and Sarah Hemple.
My second.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
My second.
We, oh, I didn't hear you. Lexi, Lexi is second, and all in favor, raise hands, please. All right, across the board, Dottie. 6-0, all right.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Megan Buck as Assistant Principal at Blue Hole Primary.
And I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? 6-0. All right, thank you, everybody. We are dismissed.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. What kind of meeting would this be?
8:35, 8:35. Allen Ward, adjourn.